And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the June 22nd, 2021, 3:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to remind you, if you want to be placed specifically on the agenda for our regular meetings, you will need to contact County Administrator's Office at least seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be placed on the agenda. However, we do allow the members of the public to address the board under matters presented by the public that will be held in this evening's session. Again, welcome, everyone. Welcome, members of the media as well. We will begin with Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Do we approve the items consent?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. We're dropping Agenda Item Number Six, a person could not show today. Agenda Item Seven as well, Mr. Grinstaff is not here. If you do have questions of him, board members, please contact the Treasurer's Office, and I'm sure that he'll be able to answer your questions. Agenda Item Number Eight, at this time, we'll have an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation we have with us, Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This one will take a little bit different tack rather than our regular monthly report, and we have our recently issued annual report, which I think will be good information. I have some extra copies, if you'd like, and we can provide this to you in electronic format also, and also another publication. The bigger book is our Annual Relocation Guide, and you'll see the first half is about moving to Martinsville and information is helpful for industry, and then if you turn it over to the back where the second half is about our tourism aspect of the community. This is a really great resource. We use it a lot with new companies coming and recruiting. You can go online at any of our websites at YesMartinsville.com, MartinsvilleMade.com, or visit Martinsville, and you can download this, or we can provide hard copies to you through our office if you'd like those, but it's been a real helpful tool for us there. We use it a lot with companies that are recruiting new recruits. Specifically, our annual report, a couple of highlights. This has been, obviously, a very good year. We talked about that in the past. You see on the front cover, the companies that we have worked with, there are four specific companies this year, and obviously Crown was the largest, but I want to point out also, in looking at this, some of these are smaller, for instance, Performance Livestock and Feed. This project that we worked on was only about $300,000 and one job. But keep in mind, this is the third expansion that we've done with Farmers Livestock. Our first deal, first project with them was in June, was June 14, actually, when we announced that in 2016. This is the second expansion we've done. This was specifically to help them get warehousing space at the former Facet Walker Project Four, a growing contract they have with Purina. So their business is really growing. It continues to grow. We're working with them now to try to expand their rail siding. They can accommodate four tanker cars, or hopper cars, rather, at one time. They would like to double that, so their business has been very good, and it's just a good, it's a good example of how we work with existing companies. Same is true for Lamont Technologies. We did the first project with them in 2012, in February of that year. So we continue to work with existing companies and grow. The Crown Holdings Project at $145 million, obviously, is a great project for us. If you look at the second page, you'll see the picture of Lot Four. The construction is fully underway. If you ever ride through, you can, you'll see a lot going on there. It's fine to ride through and look at the site, just to stay on the road. There's a lot going on, and you'll see more happening as the summer goes on. The picture to the right is actually a picture we took a month or so ago when Mr. Hall and Mr. Pace and some others of us visited in Kentucky and Bowling Green, where they're actually building a plant. So that's Brian Rogers in the picture. He's the Chief of Engineering for Crown, and this is the roll of aluminum, the way it will actually look in our plant. So we were getting a snapshot of what this plant will look like. Probably the most important information on this page is at the bottom, 184 new jobs, 150 million-plus in capital investment. But to us, we think maybe the most important number is the average wage of $20.82. Our baseline has been the average for the last three years, from 18 to 20. That was 1653, so in one year, FY 2021, we've increased from 1654 to $20.82 per job of the new jobs announced. And that's really one of the mandates of our board, that we recruit better, higher capex and better-paying jobs, and we think that's good for our community. Under Talent Development, you'll see all the different things, programs that we have, a mixed program, our summer internship, our recruitment program for Virginia Veterans to the Beach Rec Program, and about this relocation guide. And this is used also in helping to recruit labor. Our staff's been involved with the Five Points Housing Project. So we're involved across a lot of platforms, through Martinsville Made, our Talent Development Division that Sarah Hyges runs for us. Business Development, Valerie Harper's division, has been very successful. 1.3 million total investment, and that's based on the calendar year. The reporting there is a little different, it's from May to April, but another solid year for Valerie and what she does. The back page gives you specific numbers on tourism, what it means to our community, and why we invest heavily in it. Probably the most important number is 16.3 million in annual worker payroll. That turns over at least the conservative estimate seven times in a community as people go about their lives and invest money, so it's a big number for our community. I think the snapshot on the right tells a lot, in an average day, what a traveler would spend here, and what it means to us in local taxes and state taxes and in worker payrolls, so, and you can see what the Dick and Willie is doing for us. But overall, almost $75 million a year spent in this community. These numbers come from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. We don't, these are the way they count, the numbers they provide to us. And, you know, maybe an important number too, in the middle of the page, it shows you that what's going on. Tourism saves each household in Henry County almost $170 a year in taxes that would otherwise have to be paid. So we think this has been a very positive year. We would encourage you to share this information with folks, and we're happy to provide this to you in heart or electronic fashion. I'll be glad to answer a question if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Do you have any extra of these right here?
I do. I have some, and we can, we'll get you as many as you want, but yeah. Just let me know, and we'll have them delivered to you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
At this time, under the same agenda item, Mr. Hall is gonna join us down front. Heath, Mark, and others, in regard to a presentation on the RACE Grant application for the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have quite a team for you here to go over this. We've worked on this for a long time, and we're gonna keep working as we make the grant application, but part of our team internally is Tim Pace, our Director of Engineering, Mark, clearly, and also from Timmons Group, David Gudermuth is here with us. Timmons has been a tremendous help in trying to get us to where we can make this application. We're gonna talk to you a little while about the RACE Grant. RACE is an acronym. It's a federal grant. Everybody knows the success of Commonwealth Crossing. What comes after that is how do we get people in and out of Commonwealth Crossing? And we can do it with a minimal number, relatively minimal number at the outset, but as Crown expands, as Press Glass expands, as the other sites are developed and expand, we need more significant, more robust infrastructure. And part of that, a great part of that, is the road that goes in. So we're gonna pursue a RACE Grant, and I'm gonna let David come up, since he's the expert, and tell you what that is and kind of the process of what we're gonna go through. And I will tell you that last night, we presented this same report to the Rockingham County Commissioners to ask them to be co-applicants with us, and they voted unanimously to be a co-applicant, so we're happy with that.
Thank you, Tim. My name is David Goderuth, obviously from Timmons Group, the consulting, engineering, supporting Henry County in this effort. So just a quick background on the RACE Grant. It was originally introduced as the Tiger Grant. It then morphed into the Build Grant, and it is now changed over to the RACE Grant under the current administration, and the major changes are environmental, sustainability, and some socioeconomic inequity balance. So I guess some blanket ideas about the RACE Grant. It's a $1 billion grant of total allocation that's available across the entire country. The primary purpose is surface transportation, whether it be rail, freight, port projects, or significant roadway improvements to enhance regional or local economic prosperity. So 50% of the projects of this funding is available for urban projects, and 50% is available for rural projects, which this project would obviously classify as. And the benefit of the rural project designation is that 100% of the funding is available from the federal grant, so there is no local requirement for any match or support. Anything you do, whether it be the engineering, the preliminary design, can go to the benefit of that, but 100% is available for reimbursement. So the big priorities for the RACE Grant, which I kind of touched on, are significant local, regional impact to kind of drive some economic value to the communities. It needs to be justifiable, so you have to demonstrate that the benefit of this project will outweigh the cost, and then it needs to be delivered in the timeline that is required for the grant guidelines. So the project that we're proposing here is the US-220 interchange, and which will ultimately be the future I-73 corridor. So that's something that's been on the federal government's docket for a while, something that they really want to see that vision come through, and that would connect, I believe, South Carolina all the way up to Michigan as a huge economic corridor to serve the country. And you guys being in that area will be benefactors of that being realized. So what we're doing, there's an existing at-grade intersection, and in order to get it up to interstate standards for the future, the proposed project that we're going after would be an interchange, and it would be very similar. Next slide here. This is kind of an overall picture. At the far right of the screen, you'll notice that's kind of the Virginia and North Carolina line, which is Henry County and Rockingham County. The CCBC Park is kind of, the entrance is up to the top, off to the side of the screen, and all of the improvements through Martinsville Loop, and then the US-2, or the Business 220 and Martinsville Loop will be changed over to an interchange. So this grade-separated interchange is what kind of is classified as a diamond-style interchange. It's all along the corridor. We've already had advanced meetings with NCDOT, who seem very favorable of this configuration and have endorsed this project to move forward. This is a zoomed-in schematic and exhibit here. On the, I guess, north is to the right, but on the eastern side of the Business 220 side, there would be a proposed traffic signal as a part of this interchange, and that's for operational benefit to the freight and the traveling public to be able to have operational and safety benefits to coordinate with this grade-separated interchange. So this is kind of a overall zoomed-out map, gives you a point of reference. The yellow area is the CCBC Park. The circle, dash circle, is where the interchange project would be proposed, and then the blue area on the bottom of the screen is Stoneville, North Carolina. So the primary reason this project needs to be realized and needs to come through with significant truck traffic that would be increased due to all the freight and the businesses that are coming through here, is gonna put significant demand, and it essentially shows that it is failing the projected growth rate and the traffic that would be imposed on this area by all of the business growth. So we need to make sure that this operational and safety benefit is realized for the prosperity of these projects and the future I-73. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I think you guys are well-versed in what the benefits would be, but it never hurts to talk about those again. Clearly, safety is the number-one priority, trying to get that many folks in and out. We need better opportunity, better infrastructure to do that. At full buildout, we will have some congestion there that we need to mitigate. If we can get ahead of that, that's clearly gonna help the project. And as David said, this does kind of bite off a little bit of chunk of the I-73 corridor, kind of builds on what North Carolina has done already. They have been ahead of us in getting I-73, the 220 route, up to standard, so this will help us take that first step as well. And then regional benefits, clearly, we anticipate up to 2,500 employees working in that park at full buildout. That's a lot of folks to get in and out safely. And just kind of give you an update, and Mark will jump on this as soon as I step down here again. But current employment at Press Glass is 140 people. Of those 140, 45 live in North Carolina. And while we love to say that all the jobs in that park will go to hard-paying citizens from, hard-working citizens from Henry County, truth is that there is no line there. The truth is that those jobs are filled by both sides of that territory, and we need the North Carolina labor market to fulfill that park's promise. So that's why it's so important to get Rockingham County on board. We were so thrilled last night to have them come on board with us, and our work with NCDOT as well down the road, pun intended. They have been great partners to this point, so we're excited about that. And I'll get Mark to come up, maybe talk about the commuting patterns from each community.
Briefly, you can see, and with respect to labor, companies really don't see city, county, or state lines, and this indicates where our labor comes from, and you'll see that 52% of the people that live in Henry County drive outside the county every day. And this is a snapshot. This data lags about two years, but I would suggest to you, if you looked at this over the last 20 years, you'd see the same thing. This has always been our pattern. We have people driving in and out, and what it really tells us more and more is that people drive for good jobs, so that's one reason that we want to continue to recruit higher-paying jobs. But there is a lot of, as you can see, a lot of folks, almost 2,000 a day, going into North Carolina. We want to give those people a reason, we've talked about this before, to turn into Commonwealth Crossing, but it's just another good option for them. So that gives you a snapshot of where labor comes from and where it goes to. This is a look at the current park and where we are today. Press Glass took 40 acres of what was originally Lot One, and you'll see their building. You can see where the Crown Building is being built as we speak on Lot Four. As Tim mentioned, Crown, or rather, Press Glass has 140 people. Maybe it'd be more than that today. They have two shifts operating. Crown will have 125 when they're, when they build out in about 12 to 13 months from now, from Day One. More importantly, and I think we even have it on, well, let me, before we go to the next slide, you can see that Track One, we, the 80-acre pad, we're really working very hard now to find the resources to get that graded, because once Track One becomes 145-acre graded rail-serve site, we think we'll be one of the top five sites for rail in the southeast. We're already having a lot of interest in that site, a lot of inquiries about it because there are so few of those. Additionally, we have Track Three, which will be a separate 100-acre rail-serve site in the future. So we think the number that Tim gave, the 2,500 jobs in this park, ultimately are conservative, but it just depends on the type of company. So we need to be making these improvements now, because there's an awful lot of traffic. Currently, in addition to that, the 150 or so a day that Press has, they have seven trucks a day. When Crown becomes operational, Day One, there'll be 55 tractor-trailer trucks going in and out of that park to serve them. They bring all the raw product in by truck, and it goes out by truck, so the traffic is gonna be growing exponentially. It's already, even with the construction traffic out there today, these numbers kind of pale because there's, there are a lot of people working on that site every day, and as the building starts going up, there could be as many as 200 or 250 construction folks there for the next year. So these numbers are gonna continue to increase, which makes it all the more important that we deal with this issue now and improve the access both in and out of the park to make it safer and more accommodating for future tenants.
Just a couple of things, and I'll wrap it up. I don't think we can overstate, and you know this number, but it still fascinates me. Crown, at full buildout, will have 5,600 cans a minute, every minute, every day, coming out of that building. So clearly, they will ramp up quickly, and there will be a need, not just for the product, but for folks who make the product, and to get them in and out of work is extremely important. And I think I'd be remiss, too, if I didn't get this out to the public. This body, about 212 years ago, took a leap of faith to invest in this park, to trust us that we had a plan to build it out. It was a methodical plan. There were no overnight sensations here. But you had the courage and the wisdom and the wherewithal to push us to do this part, and the plan is working. It's working. Mark and I were recently in front of a whole host of site selection folks. There is considerable interest in us and in this park, and that's all because you guys had the faith to jump out in front and say, "Yeah, we need to do this." So we're not gonna clap for you, because we're not gonna do that. But you should take some credit and some encouragement from that, because it was not an easy decision. And I know when we were here and we were trying to get you to make it, it was a spirited conversation, but you did the right thing, and it's working, and it's playing out. So our next steps, you have in your packet a resolution that we would hope the board would approve. Second step, we're already doing, we're outreaching to various elected officials. Senators Kane and Senator Warner are both on board with this and are helping us gain support in Washington. They've also reached out to their peers in North Carolina. Our two senators are Democrats. The North Carolina senators are both Republicans. But this shows that you can reach across the aisle and get things done, and they are all for working toward this project to be successful. We're hopeful that if it is successful, well, first of all, we have to have the application in by July the 12th. We're working with an outside consultant to do the putting together of this application. We hope to have a draft ready by July 1st, so that we can go over it thoroughly and get it in before the deadline, so a lot of work to be done before then. If we are lucky enough to get funding, we hope that we could start the project in early October with an environmental review and all of the associated clearances that come with that. And knock on wood, if things go well, we hope to begin actual construction sometime in '23, '24. So that's our presentation. If there are any questions for us, otherwise, we would ask the board to act on the resolution.
Seeing no indication of questions, the board has had an opportunity to review the resolution as detailed and attached in your board packet. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to approving this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the resolution regarding RACE Grant funds be approved for road improvements at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Nine, we have numerous resolutions and proclamations, and I'll give you an opportunity to get to those line items. Nine A, a proclamation ending the local declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Hall.
On March 16th, 2020, the county declared a local state of emergency in response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. The Board of Supervisors affirmed the declaration at its meetings on March 24th, 2020. Commonwealth of Virginia has indicated that it will end its state of emergency on June 30th of this year, so staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors take similar action to rescind its declaration of a local emergency.
In regard to this proclamation rescinding the declaration of emergency, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval of the attached proclamation rescinding the declaration of emergency effective June 30th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine B, a resolution in support of changes to the West Piedmont Planning District Commission Charter. Mr. Hall.
The West Piedmont Planning District Commission Board is asking the governing bodies of its member localities to approve minor changes to its charter. The proposed amendments are not substantive regarding how the commission has traditionally carried out its business, but instead are changes that are to the document to provide more clarity and consistency. The charter of the West Piedmont Planning District Commission may be amended by concurring resolutions from a majority of the member jurisdictions, and the agency serves Henry, Franklin, Patrick, and Pennsylvania counties, the cities of Martinsville and Danville, and the town of Rocky Mountain.
Just as a touch of background, Mr. Slaughter and myself both served on West Piedmont Planning District Commission. This was unanimously approved by the Executive Committee there, as well as all member locations were represented and participated in this action and recommended this to go out to each individual locality. With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to the approval of the proposed resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the changes to the charter for the West Piedmont Planning District Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine C, a resolution authorizing grant applications for the Fielddale Textile Trail Connector Project. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve the attached resolution authorizing applications for federal funding assistance from the recreational trail program through the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Fielddale and the Textile Trails Connector Project. The proposed project will connect the existing Fielddale and Textile Trails to the Fielddale Park and then toward the commercial area of Fielddale.
This resolution as well has been part of the board's packet for your review. Ms. Buchanan, I believe this falls in your district.
It does, and I move that the board approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Nine D, a consideration of a resolution honoring Mike Amos for the Refuge Department. Mr. Slaughter, I believe you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that quality local government services are essential building blocks that our citizens expect and deserve, and whereas those citizens who devote themselves to public service make a more significant impact on their communities than they could ever know, and whereas one such public service employee was, is Mike Amos, who will have served the Henry County Public Service Authority and the Henry County Refuge Department for over 40 years, when he retires on June 30th, 2021. Whereas Mike Amos has been a committed and dedicated public servant and has worked tirelessly and cooperatively to promote the well-being of the citizens of Henry County, and whereas Mike Amos has been involved in numerous initiatives of great importance to Henry County, including managing the refuge and recycling efforts that have saved thousands of taxpayer dollars, and whereas Mike Amos served as a valuable team member to Henry County and the Public Service Authority, and was always willing to help out other departments anytime he was asked, and whereas his 40 years, Mike Amos served admirably by helping individuals and businesses, often going above and beyond what anyone could expect of him. Now, therefore, be it resolved on the 22nd day of June 2021 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors congratulates Mike Amos on his 40-year career of public service and thanks him for his devotion to the people of Henry County. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. If all board members will join me down front for the presentation of this.
Mike, it's with a great honor that I give you this, other than I know you're leaving. I don't like that. We picked up a whole lot of trash together.
Yes, we have.
And also, but I hope that you can keep a golf course that's going in South Carolina and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Just got a short statement to make. You know, I've worked with every one of y'all at some point or another. I've hoped everything that we've tried to accomplish, we've got accomplished. And, you know, my dad asked me when I was in high school, he said, "What are you gonna do when you grow up?" I said, "Well, I wanna operate heavy equipment." So I chose the Army and got in, operated heavy equipment, came out of there, came to work for PSA, operating heavy equipment. I'm leaving here on the 30th, and I'm going back to operate heavy equipment. So hopefully, we'll be So hopefully we'll be working in the Danville area for the next couple of years. And if you see me, I'll be on the excavator. And I do enjoy working here. And I hope, when I first came here, we had trash everywhere. And over the years, we've built a system what we have now. We have the compactors in place now. And all in all, I think the trash is a lot better. Again, I think each of y'all.
If you will, I think there's some photos to be made. Deborah, if you'll step up a little closer. You all gather a little closer, Mike.
and Inspection Department. Ms. Buchanan, I believe you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that quality local government services are essential building blocks that all citizens expect and deserve, and whereas those citizens who devote themselves to public service make a more significant impact on their communities than they could ever know, and whereas one such public service employee was Cecil Stone, who will have served in building inspection of the Planning, Zoning, and Inspection Department for over 27 years when he retires on June 30th, 2021. And whereas Cecil Stone has been a committed and dedicated public servant and has worked tirelessly and cooperatively to promote the well-being of the citizens of Henry County. And whereas Cecil Stone has diligently made himself accessible to the public, providing helpful guidance with respect to regulations and policies. And whereas Cecil Stone's wisdom, experience, services, and years of dedication in the construction industry and to our community will be greatly missed. And whereas during his 27 years, Cecil Stone served admirably by helping individuals and businesses, often going above and beyond what anyone would expect of him. Now therefore, be it resolved on the 22nd day of June 2021, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors congratulates Cecil Stone on his 27-year career of public service and thanks him for his devotion to the people of Henry County. That is signed Jim Adams, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Again, board members, if you will join me down front.
On behalf of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, we appreciate all that you've done for Henry County. And I can tell you, anytime the phone ring there, they were saying several F I. It's not hurricane, is it? But thank you so much for all your dedication to the people here of Henry County.
I'm speaking.
What?
It's been an honor. It's going to be a lifestyle change. I've been getting up and going to work somewhere for a lot of years. And I will continue getting up and going and do something, but I don't know what right now. I have tried in form, my family and all of it, just for about two or three days. I'm not planning to do anything. But I've enjoyed it. And I wish the county the very best. And I hope that the work everyone has done together will create some good foundation for future things to come. Thank you all.
And before Cecil and Mike get out of here, I want to say just a couple of things. One, that's 67 years of institutional knowledge that's walking out this door on June 30th. And it's 67 years of work ethic. It's 67 years of giving the taxpayer a full day's work. And that is, we take that for granted sometimes. But both of you guys have earned what you got coming. Put us in a bad spot. We tried to hold on to you as long as we could. But Godspeed to both of you. I've never met more professional people than these two right here. Thank you.
I got a question. Cecil, I got a house that I need to get checked out before you go. And Mike, Stoltz Road, I need to get that dang old trash picked up. Here it is.
We as a board don't often, I get to see every working employee at the county. Some are in offices, some are out in the community with a variety of different projects. Trying to catch either one of these gentlemen standing or sitting still is almost an impossibility. But it does get done. Thank you for all the responses that you've looked to and did so professionally on the board's behalf. I've said many times when we do have an opportunity to see a number of our employees at the Employee Appreciation Banquet, that you all are the face of Henry County. It's not the board members. You are engaged with the public each and every day out there doing sometimes what is a thankless task, even though, as Ms. Buchanan stated in the resolutions you read, fair and equitable enforcement of policy and procedure. And sometimes people don't understand that. And on the opposite side of it, you're the first ear that they chew on. And for that, we apologize that you've had to take some of those chewings that may be undeserved only because you were doing what was expected of you. Again, thank you both for your service. It does not go unnoticed by this board. It does not go unnoticed by the citizens of Henry County. You've made Henry County a better place, both of you.
Can I say one thing, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to say with Mike, I'm sure each one of us had his cell phone number. And we would call him. And there had been times when I would call him on a weekend. And guess what? He answered. And he would help me through a situation or a problem that I had. So thank you, Mike. And I'm sorry that I might have bothered you on a weekend or later in an evening. I'm sure your wife would have preferred to have had dinner with you instead of me calling. But thank you for that.
But most of my calls was when he was on the golf course in South Carolina. What are you doing, Mike? Well, I'm playing golf.
Well, I will tell you, where Mike hit the ball, he had ample opportunity to pick up trash there, too.
Again, thank you both. We will take up financial matters at this time. On their agenda, item number 10, 10A, an award of contract referencing inmate medical services for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Staff from the sheriff's office and the purchasing department have completed the request for proposal process for the inmate medical services at the new adult detention center. Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to award a contract for these services to Well Path Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee. The contract is a five-year agreement with three one-year extensions available. The agreement will start when the first inmate is moved into the new facility. By awarding the contract prior to opening, the vendor is able to work closely with the contractor to plan, schedule, and prepare to provide these services before the center opens. And as you know, the adult detention facility is anticipated to open in spring 2022. And Sheriff Perry is here, should you have any questions.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend awarding the five-year contract for inmate medical services to the new adult detention center to Well Path Incorporated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10B, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation received from insurance proceeds in the amount of $78,000 and to award the following contracts for replacement vehicles. Number one, to Hall Automotive in Virginia Beach for four 2021 Dodge Chargers totaling $136,839. Three of these cars will be purchased with funds in the fiscal year 2021 budget, and one will be purchased after July 1 from the fiscal year 2022 budget. Contract number two is to Shehe Ford in Richmond for four Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles totaling $147,886. Three of the Fords will be purchased with funds in the current fiscal year budget. One will be purchased after July 1 from the fiscal year 2022 budget. And all this pricing and contract negotiation is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Program and specs. And again, Sheriff Perry is here, should you have questions.
In regard to the additional appropriation and award of contract for these vehicles, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the appropriation of $78,000 for insurance proceeds and award contracts to Hall Automotive in the amount of $136,839 and to Shehe Ford in the amount of $147,886.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10C, an award of contract referencing mowing and landscaping for the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center and Patriot Center at Beaver Creek. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to award a contract to Perlemon Landscape Dimensions Incorporated for turf mowing, landscaping, and other outdoor maintenance at CCBC and at the Patriot Center. The approximate value of this contract is $103,000 annually, and it can be renewed for up to five years. Perlemon Landscape Dimensions currently provides these services and is being recommended for the contract after careful evaluation of proposals submitted by three vendors, and Perlemon Landscape is based in Henry County.
In regards to awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract to Perlemon Landscape Dimensions Incorporated as outlined above and to authorize staff to exercise any subsequent renewals in accordance with the terms of the contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10D, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for the repair of the Fielddale Trail. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to appropriate funds of $88,516 for repairs to the Fielddale Trail damaged from flooding during Hurricane Florence. A grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, is providing 75% of the funds, and it is matched with 20% from the state and 5% from Henry County.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that this trail is in your district.
It is. And I gladly recommend that the board approve the appropriation of $88,516.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10D, an additional appropriation referencing the sale of timber for the Bryant property. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to appropriate $50,000 of the revenue generated from the sale of timber on the Bryant property to allow us to properly reseed that property, and the funds will carry forward to FY '22.
In regard to this appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the appropriation of $50,000 as outlined above.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10F, an additional appropriation referencing the contingency funds. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $100,000 from the contingency fund to cover expenditures in the board of supervisors' operating budget. These expenditures are directly related to legal fees associated with the reversion process and other professional services associated with the conversion of John Red Smith Elementary to Apartments.
In regard to the appropriation from the contingency fund, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve appropriations of $100,000 from the contingency fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10G, an award of contract referencing garbage truck for the Refuge Department. Mr. Hall?
Mike Amos leaves us spending money. Mike Amos, our Refuge Department manager, is asking the board to award a contract to Excel Truck Group in the amount of $263,242 for the purchase of a 2022 Mack front-loading garbage truck. Excel Truck Group was the lower of the two bids received, and funds for this purchase are included in the current year budget.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract Excel Truck Group for $263,242 for the purchase of a 2022 garbage truck. And it will be named Mike Amos Garbage Truck. Is that correct?
Second. Have a motion and a second. One point of this discussion. Mike, typically, what are the miles that you guys get on a truck?
The first three we bought, back then, it was $133,767. We got over a million miles on two of them. And by the day, $190,000 on both. And we have a $2,001 on the road now.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10H, an additional appropriation referencing COVID expenses from the general fund. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to approve an appropriation of $600,615 from the general fund to cover costs directly related to the county's response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, but in excess of the amounts allocated to the CARES Act grant funding. This is primarily an accounting procedure to make sure that closing out the financial records on June 30th goes smoothly. Staff will provide additional information at the meeting if you wish. Darrell Jones is with us, should you have any questions.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the appropriation of $600,615 from the general fund to cover costs directly related to the county's response to the Corona COVID-19 pandemic.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10I, additional appropriation referencing tasers for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve a transfer appropriation of $26,874 from existing operating funds to facilitate the purchase of tasers from Axon Enterprise. According to Sheriff Perry, patrol deputies will be equipped with these devices. And Sheriff Perry is here, should you have any questions.
In regard to this appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the transfer appropriation totaling $26,874.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Give everyone time to scroll to the next agenda item, which is somewhat lengthy. The board has the background material as part of its working papers. That is agenda item number 11, an appropriation of the FY 2021, 2022 county budget, and we will have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Hall?
The board of supervisors at your May 10th, 2021 meeting adopted the FY 2021, 22 total county budget. This included the setting of tax codes and adoption of the school budget. However, no county funds can be expended or obligated until an appropriation has been made. Attached to your working papers is a draft appropriations resolution. Reflecting minor changes from the current resolution are noted in red. Essentially, these are dates that are changed. The proposed resolution also reflects categorical appropriation, which is what we've done in the past, and that is based on previous board decisions. You have attached the appropriations resolution in two exhibits. And as Mr. Adams said, once you begin to take action, we will need a roll call vote to make this transaction.
Okay. In regard to appropriating our 2021, 22 In regard to appropriating our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two county budget, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the attached appropriations resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Hall, will you poll the board for its vote, please?
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
That takes us to Agenda Item Number Twelve, informational items. We will start with any comments from the board, starting with Mr. Zaire.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Just only note that this coming Thursday night, I will be having a town hall meeting here in this room, the Sermon Room, at seven o'clock for the Collinsville District. Anybody that would like to come is welcome to come, and we'll start right directly at seven o'clock, and I hope that we have a good turnout for that.
All right, great. Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
I have several items for you. If you remember, last month, we told you that staff would prepare an update on our CARES Act expenditures, how we got to where we got, and then piggyback that with a report on our ARPA funds. You should have a piece of paper in front of you that lists basically what I'm going to go over, because there's a lot of numbers, but I wanted to get a hard copy out for folks. First, on the CARES Act, we received and had spent eight million eight hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars on CARES Act functions. The vast majority of that money was spent toward public safety salaries that were tied directly to the COVID-19 pandemic and the work on that. That was a little over six-point-three million. A little bit over one-point-one million we spent on PPEs and building upgrades to bathrooms, our entrances, protective equipment for our employees, that sort of thing. Roughly six-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars we spent for teleworking. We replaced our desktop units all with laptops, which allows our employees, if they have to work from home, they are tied into our system automatically, and that makes it much more smooth to proceed with our work. One hundred and thirty-seven thousand, almost one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, we spent on housing and food assistance. Much of that, we made grants to the United Way, which ran several food assistance programs, and we made a grant to social services to allow citizens to tap into that for the payment of bills. And we spent three hundred and four thousand on small business grants. You may recall, we had a small business grant program, we had a team in-house that went through those and evaluated them and allocated that money, so that was nearly three hundred and five thousand dollars. So that wrapped up all of the, essentially, all of the CARES Act money. They're miscellaneous expenses, but nothing of significance. Next on our agenda is the American Rescue Plan Act, or the ARPA Act. That's the one that we're in the middle of right now. We will receive a total of nine million eight hundred twenty thousand one hundred and five dollars from the ARPA money. We have received the first half of that already. Last Monday, we were wired four-point-nine million dollars, slightly over that. The next half of our allocation will come in twelve months, so it'll be in the spring of twenty-two. With CARES Act expenditures, we were spending it in a frenzy, because we got the money essentially in March or April, some in May, and we had to have it spent by December thirty-first. So we were in full-out frantic mode, because we did not want to return any of it to the federal government. We felt like we could use it well here. Of course, as we got to December thirty-first, about a week outside of that, they said, oh, you can have three more months to spend it. That's kind of how this process works. But I'm confident, and I'm sure with the team that we had doing it, Dale, myself, Darrell Jones, and Richard Stanfield, along with Valerie Harper from the EDC on the small business side of it, I think we spent the money wisely and well, and I do think we had a true impact spending that money on our community. So next with ARPA, we get that. ARPA is different. We have to have that money obligated by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, so clearly we can be a little more strategic in how we spend that money. And there are some differences from CARES Act. Some of the things are the same. We can spend it on public health emergencies tied to COVID. We can spend it to provide extra pay to those who are on the front lines, our public service, public safety folks and folks like that. There are some differences in ARPA, and these are kind of, these kind of have me excited on what we can do, how we can make an impact other than what we've already done. You can, localities can replace lost revenue that happened during and resulting from the pandemic. So if we have lost revenue and can quantify that, we can use some of the money to do that. We cannot replenish our reserves with the ARPA money. That is strictly prohibited. However, we are able to make capital investments in water and sewer infrastructure and broadband infrastructure, and I see Ms. Buchanan nodding her head, because I'm sure she's got a list of projects already there for me, but we think we can make a significant impact on improving infrastructure. Different from CARES Act, we can provide direct aid to the tourism industry locally. And one thing that pops to my mind is the Smith River Sports Complex, which the year prior was booked for fifty-one of fifty-two weekends, and during the pandemic, it went dusty. There was just no one coming in. We couldn't book, they couldn't stay in town, so that would be an avenue that I would hope we could assist them with some of their recuperation. We're seeking to get clarification on whether we can use money for site prep and economic development. As you saw earlier, we have sites at Commonwealth Crossing that need to be prepared, and those are costly expenditures. It really depends on who you ask, whether this is allowable, and I know that makes Darrell Jones nervous, because we may end up sharing a cell if we don't do it appropriately. But the state of North Carolina, Governor Cooper's office has already put out how it's going to spend its money, and a significant chunk will be on-site preparation and economic development. So you always stand out less than a crowd. So if that meets the approval of the powers that be, I would hope that the Commonwealth of Virginia and us in Henry County would be able to do the same thing or make the same decision. We've been in contact with VDP. The Virginia plan has not come together yet. It will not come together until August, when the governor calls the General Assembly back for a special session, so we're kind of lagging behind here, but we're hopeful that VDP will advocate to the General Assembly to mirror what North Carolina is allowing their folks to do. I mentioned our allocation. That's not the only money that's coming to the building. Third floor of the school system will get its own allocation, and its allocation will be eighteen million fifty-one thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-one cents, about twice what we're getting as the county as a whole. And overall, Commonwealth of Virginia is getting about four billion. And one other difference between CARES Act and ARPA, CARES Act money went to the state and then was allocated to the localities. A chunk of ARPA is coming directly to the localities, and the state is getting a chunk. So we're hopeful that we can get in the state pot as well for some larger projects, and we've had that conversation already. And one twist to the ARPA expenditures that was not part of the CARES Act, independent cities. Commonwealth of Virginia is the only state in the Union that has independent cities. Independent cities were allowed to double-dip, if you will, in the ARPA money through work from Senator Cannon and Senator Warner. That means that cities will be able to get two bites at the apple. And in talking with Mr. Torniski in the city, I think, he thinks, and he relayed this to me, he thinks the city of Martinsville will get approximately fourteen million dollars from ARPA, which is clearly more than we're getting. So the community will be flush with cash, and I'm hopeful that we can work together to kind of put our heads together and some of our monies together to make some generational changes, either in site prep or in infrastructure improvements or expansion of broadband. We have a chance to make some significant generational improvements, and I'm hopeful that we can get together and do that. So as we get into the ARPA process and how we're going to allocate that, we'll bring that plan back to you. I anticipate it'll be the same team that we had prior for CARES Act. We'll put our heads together, listen to department heads for proposed projects, and we'll see how we can change things for the vote. Any questions about any of that? That was kind of long and wordy, number-laden. Couple other things. We have hired, or made an offer, and it's been accepted for the public information position. We will announce that sooner than later, but not today. But that position will start July the first. We're very excited with the candidate that accepted it. We had a very deep pool from which to choose, which was nice. That said, we have openings. If anybody's looking for work, let them come over to see us. In our department head meeting this morning, I asked for a show of hands of which departments had full-time openings. Unfilled, and eight of the department heads raised their hands. And that doesn't include Cecil and Mike. We have replacements for those positions. So we have eight other departments that have full-time openings, so please drive your friends and neighbors to our website and check those job openings, and hopefully we can fill some of those. I don't remember four. You may have heard of something called the Marcus Act. The Marcus Act is like the Amber Alert, but it's for those who suffer with mental issues. It's going to be set up statewide at some point, but there's a method to getting on that list. In other words, you have to do it yourself, or if you're under the age of eighteen, your parent or guardian has to do it. So you voluntarily put your information in, so that when that's in there in nine-one-one or nine-eight-eight, which will be the number, when they get a call, they will know automatically that the person making the call or the person in the home has some mental issues that need to be dealt with. So we have that link on our website that you can go on and fill that information in if you want to be part of the Marcus Alert program. Strictly voluntary, you've got to put it in yourself, but it does kind of give a heads-up to those who may answer a call that you may need special assistance or special skill sets that come to your house. So if you want to encourage people to check that out, it's called the Marcus Act. Anyone under the age of eighteen, their parent or guardian puts it in, but at the age of eighteen, that information rolls away. So the person who, at that time, is considered a legal adult would have to go back in and fill in that information for himself or herself. I think that's a great tool that's going to be rolled out, and we're hopeful that it makes an impact. And number five, we got a letter within the last week. We had applied for a grant under the twenty-twenty-one Virginia Community Development Grant, the CDBT program, for the Fielddale upgrade. We received a letter that said we did not receive funding for that grant, and we are attempting to contact the folks at DHCD to just kind of do an after-game breakdown on what we were short on and perhaps guide us through the next application. And then last but not least, we have a holiday coming up, July fourth on a Sunday, so we will take off Monday the fifth per the Commonwealth of Virginia holiday schedule. And that's all I have.
With that, needing board's authorization that we do a two-hour early hour on the day prior to that. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero.
Thank you very much.
And jumping back to the item that you covered in detail, the qualifying expenses, I think, were managed very, very well by the management team that looked into the CARES Act funding, and special shout-out to public safety. You all were just knee-deep in it everywhere, from COVID responses, testing. Your folks were actively involved there, met, along with, when I went to get vaccinations, they were out there in the pouring rain directing traffic and many, many other things in response to this, and so please express our appreciation to your staff in regard to that.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting if someone will cite the items as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom and Information Act. Two-point-two thirty-seven eleven A-one for discussion of appointees to the Piedmont Regional Community Services Board and Roanoke River Basin Association. Two-point-two thirty-seven eleven A-seven for discussion of pending legal matters. Two-point-two thirty-seven eleven A-three for discussion in acquisition disposal of real estate. Two-point-two thirty-seven eleven A-five, discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. See everyone. Mr. Zaire?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zaire, I believe that you have a county-wide appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Crystal Lusk to the Piedmont Regional Community Services Board for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Also, the board, it's been brought to our attention that we need to extend a lease agreement with the Mount Oliver Ruption Club, and I will accept the motion that the board enter into a lease agreement with the Mount Oliver Ruption Club.
Sir moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five, and one abstained.
Abstained, yes, sir. Can't you pass that down?
As well, there is an agreement that the board has had in the past and an opportunity to review in regard to retail strategies. I will accept a motion to that effect.
Sir moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, are there any other items that we need to consider prior to our evening session?
Yes, sir.
Board members, in there, doesn't seem to be an indication as such. We'll stand in recess till our six P.M. session.
Thirty minutes? We can do it.
Back to order from our recess from our earlier session. I'd like to welcome all visitors tonight. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of a regular meeting to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public later in tonight's meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. To begin with, we'll have Agenda Item fourteen. We have David Kais with us from VDOT. We're going to consider general highway matters, part of that being a confirmation of this six-year secondary road plan, and the board has as part of its working papers an attachment of the proposed secondary road plan for Henry County for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-seven. The board previously held a public input session with the Virginia Department of Transportation on these items and heard input from resident engineer Lisa Hughes regarding possible funding for VDOT. With that, and that background, and the board's familiar with this process, I will need a motion that we confirm by approval of this plan.
Sir moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. David, what else do you have for us tonight?
Yeah, just a couple of items. The latex overlay that was being done on the south end of two-twenty business has been completed, and we still have our asphalt paving and surface treatment schedules to begin hopefully soon. Only updates I have for you all tonight, unless you all have any questions for me.
Does anyone have any questions? No indication of such? Thank you for all that you all are doing.
Thank you all.
Agenda Item fifteen, we have matters presented by the public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? I see one hand, I see two hands. We did have someone signed up, but I do not see them in the room, so I'll read a brief statement as part of board policy. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members and staff. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation three to five minutes. Mr. Stigall, I saw your hand first.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm Doug Stigall from the Collinsville District. I live in Collinsville, and I didn't quite understand last month what they were talking about. Maybe you can educate me, tell me what I'm... They gave them, they give bonuses to the elected officials, the school board, and they were calling them employees for the county. I don't know where they get that. I believe, Deborah, you said they were employees for the county. Where are you finding that information?
And they were calling them employees for the county. I don't know where they get that. I believe, Deborah, you said they were employees for the county. Where are you finding that information?
Again, Mr. Stigall, we're here to listen to you.
Okay, I'll ask that on the full, your request then, for you. I appreciate that. But I don't agree with giving elected official bonuses. They already getting, San Australia didn't explain everything that I think needs to be explained on that. If they getting bonuses like it said, some of them are already getting free health insurance. And they saying that they qualify as a full-time employee, but how do they do that when they don't even know how many hours they're working? The difference between a full-time employee and a part-time employee is 25 hours a week. Now I ask them, well, how many hours are they working? They say, we don't know. How many, what kind of form do they use to track their time? We don't know. But this insurance is a major bonus to them. It's costing the taxpayers $723.17 a month. This is the information that the school board gave me. And that's $8,678 a year. And you think about this new jail coming up, if they hire 80 people there, just annually, that would cost a taxpayer $694,243. You can check my figures, I hope I write. You can tell me if I'm wrong. But I just don't think that they should give elected officials, hand them taxpayers' dollars. And I know some of y'all agreed with it, and some of you didn't. Maybe some of y'all are hunting for a bonus yourself, I don't know. But I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Wyatt, I saw your hand.
Tommy Wyatt, I live in the Collinsville District also. Great one, I'm sent what Doug said. I expressed that to the Collinsville, I mean, to the board's school board myself. But basically, I'm here today because I've looked around Henry County, I'm the new poor man. I am. I draw my Social Security, small pension where I worked. People come up to me and tell me what they drawing on, I mean, unemployment. Wow, I am the new poor person right here in front of you. I need break. Why cannot we receive a break on senior citizens' real estate tax? I do not know. That is one thing y'all got, we got a very aging population in Henry County. We're building low-income apartments, Fieldale, Collinsville. Is it going to be any tax coming in on that? I think in tax credit, go with the historical part of it, you know? And I'm worried about, I'm, 10 years is going to go fast on every version. I commend all of y'all, you've done great. I think you got everything you could, especially Deborah, Joe, I appreciate y'all's votes greatly, but I appreciate the others too, I understand. Everybody's got different opinions, and you've got to vote with how you feel. But y'all have got to find a way to help us citizens out. Early, I'm 66, it's time. I figured out how much I paid in real estate tax, a lot more than I paid for my house. It just, I don't know, it just don't seem right. Now, I lived in the scanning for my whole life, they educated my children, you know, they've just been great, and I think they do a good job, school board, everywhere. In Parks and Rec, PSA, we've done great in this county, y'all have done great. But look at that, I don't know, it may be something in the General Assembly says you can't do it, I don't know. But I did have to bring it up, because I know a lot of us in my shoes are looking around, we're seeing people not working, and they better off than I am. And it's sad, it's sad, really sad. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Does anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public?
I'd like to say one more thing if I could.
Yes, sir, I'll give you a moment.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, on what he was saying too, my friend there, with the reversion, the taxpayers didn't have any say on that. And, you know, our taxes are going to go up. So I think they need to look at every avenue they can to start saving money. Keep it. And this, it's going to be harder and harder on the taxpayers to pay their bills in the future.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Seeing no indication as such, Mr. Hall, are there any other items of business that we need to consider?
Yes, sir.
Board members, do you have any? I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Sir, moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Everyone, have a good evening.